Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this Lake Forest Park City Council Committee of the whole for May 23rd to order, please. And so great to see you all in person. Welcome back, Councilmember Bodie. You look very rested, and I hope you had a wonderful trip.
I did, thank you. And I would just say, this is my first in person
It's kind of surreal, isn't it? Yeah, well, we have two items on the agenda tonight, and we, the first one is the continued discussion of council goals and priorities. And just for everyone's edification out there in the public, we started our conversation about this at our council retreat a number of weeks ago, and then continued on into a work session. So last week, two weeks ago, I'm forgetting now. And this will be our third session. And this session is so that we can all have a conversation together. It's the first time we've all been together, as Councilwoman Bodie indicated, in person ever, actually. And for us as former continuing on council members from last year, it's the first time in 20, 26 months, I believe. So what I wanted to do tonight is start out by refusing, refusing, refreshing ourselves on a couple of things that we, that we talked about and made some conclusions about. Nothing is, nothing has been finalized by any stretch of the imagination. And I wanted to then turn over the floor to Councilmember Bodie to express her thoughts about her, her priorities and goals. And then for us to come back together and have a conversation about that and see where we are. And again, this is not to solve all the world's problems. This is to give some broad guidance to the administration and for us to think about what we're doing going forward. So I'm gonna have to put my glasses on because this is farther away than I can actually see. Just a refresher, the top three priorities that came out of the short-term kind of timeframe, pedestrian safety, pedestrian streets, parenthetically, control speed limits and healthy streets, things of that nature. Then listening sessions were second in terms of our priorities in the short term. And specifically, retreat and budget were also highlighted for conversation with the community, as well as other listening opportunities with the community. And finally, financing opportunities, ongoing methods for making sure our city is well taking advantage of all the opportunities we have out there for leveraging resources from the federal government, state government, grants from other agencies, et cetera, going forward. And yeah, and then here's some of the new ideas that also came out of this. And they were kind of put in a separate category here. Business vitality, equity and inclusion, city hall capacity improvements. I actually just recently talked to a member of the community that would like to see the city hall a little bit larger for particularly during, during a pandemic. Electrical infrastructure is specifically about the capacity for environmental upgrades to homes and businesses, as well as charging stations, stations for vehicles, as well as multimodal transport. Develop town center, meaning trying to find a way as a community to make sure that the town center is, the value is maximized through cooperation with whoever the owner is at the town center. And then community endowments, thinking about ways to invest, additional investments in our community and local programs. Let's see, council goals and priorities. Again, we define the near term as one biennium. So we're coming into a biennium starting at the end of this year, or should say next year. The medium term, again, these are somewhat arbitrary, but we needed some terms of art here for us to play with. Medium term, two to four years, and then the long term, five years and beyond. And I also would make a note that we did talk about where we wanted to be. Very blue sky, 30,000 foot view, and 10 years or more. Midterm priorities from the work session. To mention voter reform, a question of whether we should consider districts at some, districts at some point. Housing study, that is something that's been on our radar for a considerable amount of time, and will be part of, Mr. Administrator Hill had indicated that will be part of our comp plan upgrade update beginning next year. Forest stewardship, the shoreline model as, as one that we could emulate here within our community. And I think a couple of this has got, have gotten some feedback, actually about your column, about that, Vice Chair Casover. Formalizing neighborhoods, Mr. Ferratoni, Councilmember Ferratoni had mentioned kind of capturing the identity of neighborhoods and maybe naming or thematically or something of that nature. And that's all kind of tied into our community coalescing together as, as a, as a community that had more than 50 annexations over a period of time. Land, open space acquisitions. There are a number of heirloom types of properties around the community that are going to be available or potentially could be available in the future. Future, and right now, we don't really have a, a very specific method or set of policies relative to that kind of acquisition. Ongoing financing opportunities. Again, how do we leverage the dollars and the scarce resources that we have to move forward with the projects that the community and, and we have all discussed that, that we'd like to see? And finally, interurban trail connections. That is a project that has been going on for a number of years, and I was of note. I, I saw that the city of Shoreline has, I believe, $561,000 in funds allocated for that. And I don't know where they are in the process, but that is very positive. And that may be part of some of their pedestrian infrastructure that they're putting in in response to the sound transits and BRT programs. Let's see, and then, do you go to the next? Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Riddle had, had mentioned customizing the building code, trying to make it so it is more in tune with Lake Forest Park system values and, and our environmental ethic. Outside agency, figuring out ways to connect with our various local resources and local groups in a deeper way so that we leverage this, again, the scarce resources that we have. Mr. Ferratoni and Ms. Bodie were just talking about the RIAA8. Again, finding ways to make sure that's an environmental group for the RIAA8 watershed group and is instrumental in protecting the salmon, salmon populations and trying to restore salmon runs as other, as well as other environmental considerations. And PDS runoff concerns from 522 and 104, we've all seen the, the challenges there. And then, again, this is a little bit of, of repeating something, but town center proactive engagement with potential new owners. There may be a new owner at some point, and regardless of that, we need to continue and enhance our relationship with whoever decides to, whoever owns the, the property, because it is our largest center of commerce within our community. Okay, and then where are we in 10 years? This is what I referenced before, very briefly. An increased sense of community, and this, this encompasses so much about thematically amongst many different things we've talked about at our retreat. Naming of neighborhoods, multimodal access, connections, trails, all sorts of things like that. Enhanced green infrastructure. A model pedestrian multimodal community. More multi-generational diverse housing, we have all recognized that, that we've had some folks that are a little bit older that have had to leave our community because there aren't enough housing opportunities and diverse options for them to suit their needs. Financially viable city, I think that's thematic across everything we do to make sure that we continue to find ways to make sure that the city is, continues to go in the direction of being better, even more stable than it was in the past. Less invasive species, I think all of us would agree that that's one, I believe you mentioned IVs. And there was no apology necessary for the, the, the English Ivan. We do appreciate it. Preserve and enhance public safety. And that is very encompassing as well. And, and that's something that's also thematic across multimodal, across public safety in terms of the police department, and as well as sense of community. And let's see, what do we have left? Is that the end? That's the end. Okay, with that, yes, I wanted to hand over the, the, the mic to our esteemed colleague, Ms. Bodie. And, and I would like for her to have the opportunity to present some of her ideas. And then maybe let, would you prefer to go through your ideas first and then have questions at the end, or?
Yes, if that's okay.
Please go right ahead, Councilwoman.
So, thank you. This is like the 10-minute retreat from, from me, like the five-minute university or something. So I'm gonna go through by those general headings that we had from our previous strategic plan. And I haven't really broken my thoughts up into, you know, immediate term, near term, and long term. Though I do think when it comes to 10 years out, I, I remember looking at the Lake Forest Park legacy document from way back when and thinking that many of the concepts there or the goals there are still very, very strong priorities for our community. So I would actually like to have a chance on that to go back and look at that document in connection with the 10-year goals and see how well they match up or don't match up. Anyway, in the top three issues, I just have a strong feeling that we should add the planning and engagement for the lakefront park. And the reason is that it's a multifaceted issue. It isn't just a matter of developing a design for a park. It involves interim maintenance, and these are all topics for guidance from the council. Interim maintenance, parking, safety and security, community space issues, as well as the more, you know, the things people probably think more about. Environmental preservation, public access and recreation and so forth. So I, I do think that a number of these are not issues that the Parks Board will engage on, that the council's going to have to engage on. I do think it overlaps heavily with the, with the listening sessions idea because it's another, yet another topic we need to have listening sessions on. To me, it goes without saying that we should have listening sessions. So I would be comfortable bumping that for this and underscoring that as some kind of overarching theme. But I'm, I'm open to discussion. I just wanted to say that there's so much work, short term and long term on that. And a lot of it is going to involve guidance from the council and participation from the staff, not just the Parks Board. So to me, it looks, it looks bigger, it looks as big as some of our other big three issues. Another overarching comment, I, I think that the regional initiatives that we have right now ongoing are so different from when I came on the council. We didn't have that kind of breadth and, and significance of regional issues, whether it's the aquatics facility, the integration of the radar program, the crisis center homelessness issues. And I, I just think we need to somehow, that's kind of another overarching theme, if you think about it. That's, that's a whole new way of doing things where, because we're small, we kind of leverage our money very well when, when the funding is proportionate. So again, I'm not quite sure how to reflect that, but in a few places here, I'll, I'll mention it. So starting with mobility, I strongly support the idea of reducing speed limits. I think we will have to take a look at neighborhood parking zones, whether it's in connection with the waterfront park or development of the BRT, because we're going to have, we already have on-street park and ride parking, but we're going to have more. And as, especially as people pick up on their use of the bus service. So maybe not so much now, but two years from now, maybe it's a midterm kind of issue that we should look at. I think we have some provisions. Certainly, you want the community members who live in the immediate vicinity to be okay with it. So obviously, if it was supported, it would be supported if, if you didn't have very many households who wanted it, then, you know, there'd be a public dimension to that. I do think we need to take advantage of the fact that we have so much more grant funding right now, a post-pandemic, because of the, the way the state funding and the federal funding has come down. We, we should take advantage of that increased funding and be pretty aggressive on our pursuing sidewalk projects and say, especially safe routes to schools. My sense from the last conversation I, I heard on that at, at Sound Cities was there's a lot more money than previously, and it has more flexibility. And there might be another round coming up, but I, I want us to take advantage of the fact that this money, the, the amount of money that is floating around right now may not be here three years from now. So just an opportunistic approach. And then substantively, the walkway initiatives. I'm aware that the, there have been some discussions about closing some streets, sometimes for pedestrian use, which I, which I support. But also, the tree board has put together some walks that involve significant trees. The Parks Board is also very interested in this and wanting to have a series of walks that either connect parks or end up in parks or, or have a loop that's reasonable. And so I, I think those are smart initiatives that we need to try to figure out a way to integrate and, and make it into something that's a little more programmatic and connected to our website. So I just see random pieces, bits and pieces not being necessarily pulled together. So that's it on mobility for me. It doesn't mean I don't support other things. These are just highlights that I'm commenting. For healthy environment, I want to, in looking at the materials, of course, we have more than climate action on our plate, near term and midterm. And I want us to remember that it connects up with land use issues as well and the role of the planning commission. I strongly support the idea of looking at endowment for land acquisition and protecting, protecting the best, taking advantage of opportunities to acquire legacy properties. I think we'd probably want to have criteria. I know the Stewardship Foundation is looking at an endowment, so how would this integrate with that? But I really think that's a smart idea, perhaps. Community funding could go into that as opposed to just all city funding, so people could, you know, do their estate planning with that in mind and so forth. So again, it's conceptual for me. I'm not in the, to the details, but I really support that. And then I just, this is more of a footnote, I really support Jeff Jensen's idea that he's going to seek funding to look at reintroducing those unique native Kookoomee to Lake Forest Park streams. And so I just, we don't have to put it in the document, but remember, I remember, I think we all kind of gave him the thumbs up to supporting his grant application to RIAA8. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Community vitality. I took a broad view of this. Some of the topics that are in the other ideas or out years kind of fit into it. I've been thinking about this. I think the city should acquire the professional building site. It, it, we, I, I'm aware that we're outgrowing our city hall. The parking garage is nowhere in sight. It's, you know, not in the best shape, but the property is for sale now. And so I think we should really think hard about creative ways to do that for the future of our city. So that's something where strike while the iron is hot. I think we have an opportunity that we might not have at some other point in time and that we should consider acquiring that adjacent site. Again, on community vitality, I don't think we should change our town center code as someone who was involved and went through all the long deliberations on it. And I remember Councilmember Lebo's thing that we should have code for what we want to see, not what a developer would necessarily love to build. And, but we need to be prepared, similar to what came up on, on some of the summaries of, of subsequent actions. We need to be prepared because I do think that if a big, if someone buys the property and a big development proposal comes in, it's just gonna be a lot for the staff and, and less for the council, but I think we'll probably be engaged at some appropriate level for our legislative function. And I, I think that it's not the level of development we normally see, and we need to give some thought to how we would be prepared for that. Because you can't just hire a bunch of consultants and count on that working well. So just, and then also for community vitality, you could say that the walkways fit into that and some of the pedestrian safety issues. You could also say that the aquatics facility fits into that, that regional initiative, because that's something that would be a community asset. Public safety. I think the regional initiatives for radar, crisis center, homelessness, sheltering is, are, are all really important. And that's how we're playing in, in those general areas of housing and housing, shelter, mental health, and, and so forth. So I just, I think we should acknowledge that we're doing that. I mean, I actually think that's so cost-effective and cool. And so I commend the North King County cities for working together in that collaborative way. And then also, I know it's on some list or other, but cut-through traffic is, is still, and traffic calming for cut-through traffic where we see those routes. We already know where some of them are. It, it's just, as traffic picks up, I think it's picking up. And I find myself, I'll just say, instead of going up to the corner of Ballenger, I'd make the turn at, at the Arco and go up, you know, Brookside Boulevard. So I find myself doing the same thing. I must admit guilt. But it's, it's something that, I don't know exactly what we can do, but it's going to loom larger, I think, in the next two to five years. Encountable and engaged government. I, this is a topic that the Parks Board had brought up before the pandemic and now after the pandemic, which is upgrading our policies and procedures for community donations to the parks. But I think it's a broader issue. Is there a crowdfunding kind of approach or something where if you have someone, it's similar to the endowment fund? What's our wish list? When, when, when Shorecrest High School was running out of money, I helped run the teacher wish list where, where the teachers basically could ask for something, and then we got it out to the whole listserv. And then, you know, people granted the wishes, and then they got recognition for doing that. That was small and modest in scale. But I think something conceptually similar where we have, I, I don't think we should just rely on people to say, oh, I wanna put a bench in Grace Col Park. We should, we should have a list of projects that we'd like to get funding for and where people can see the results of their contributions. It could again fit in with estate planning. And then I guess that's it, just emphasizing that, when, I didn't realize we were looking at 10 years out. So when we, when I, I think we should spend a little bit of time on looking at the previous legacy document and, and, and doing a good job of here's where we want to be in 10 years, even though it will be more conceptual and more of a, you know, of a goal or a vision for the future. So with that, I'll stop and take any questions people have, because I know I've talked for probably at least 10 minutes.
You're fine. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bodie. Colleagues, thoughts, questions? Feel free to to build off of what you're saying as well. Councilmember Ferratoni, please.
This again, can you hear me? So thanks for your thoughts. They're great. And I'm really intrigued by the acquiring the professional building site thing. Can you speak more of that? What do you see us using that for?
I think it is flexible. I see it as a city hall annex. If we don't need all the space, it could, we could rent some of it out to defray the costs. I personally use the Chase Bank, so I wouldn't want to lose that, but but, you know, we would own it. I understand the medical office has already moved out, so there's a lot of vacant space. And if it stays vacant too long, it will deteriorate. You know, that's what happens with vacant properties. So I think we have some interest in not having it rundown further. But it could be, youth care could stay there, you know, it could, could, there could be community purposes. It gives us a little bit of a buffer too, because we don't know what's gonna happen with third-place commons, even though we've written into our code as much as we can to encourage that to, to remain. So to me, it gives us options. And so I don't have a specific plan, but I start with the concept that it could be additional space for city hall and, and, and a good investment for the future. And then potentially rental or community space as well for the time being. How, how that would mesh then with community space at the park? And third-place commons, those would be, you know, interesting triangular conversations to have as well. So I just, again, I don't have any idea of what the market price would be, but I think it is. And certainly, sometimes prices go up when people see government agencies coming. But I, I think we have an opportunity right now, and we should explore it.
Colleagues, did you want to explore that for any other comments on that question?
Thanks for the opportunity to respond. I think, you know, your ideas are great. Yeah, I didn't have any particular ideas. I just know that we are kind of outgrowing the space in city hall, you know, especially vis the police. The amount of storage for evidence and stuff is starting to run down. And of course, the needs for IT have gone up. And so, you know, you've got literally, you know, servers stacked on servers in the back there. So I do like this idea. I'm just, you know, kind of wondering what the state of that building is, because if it's the same age as some of the other buildings around here, we might have to put a fair amount of money into upgrading it. So it's useful for our purposes.
That has occurred to me also, but still, I think we should explore the numbers.
Colleagues, any more thoughts on, on topic, Vice Chair Casover? Right, there you go.
Thank you, and I just have a question for Administrator Hill. Is it, is it allowable for a city to own a property and make money on it by renting it out to other entities?
Yeah, in fact, we have a structure for city hall where we can rent out rooms. There's a fee structure involved with that. So yes, you can do that.
I mean, like lease to Chase Bank, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we'd have to look into the depths of that one. I'm more thinking of, you know, community functions, things like that. And it's merely the cost of, of what it costs the city to provide those services. But we can double check. I was just looking online to see if that property was ever subdivided by Merlot Guyer. It doesn't look like they ever subdivided that off. So it's still part of their, their whole piece.
Okay, well, I, I mean, so, Councilwoman Bodie, thank you very much for bringing that up. I think it's a very good idea. And, and I can see a lot of potential uses for it from the community as well as from the city. So so I think it's really worth exploring. Thank you for bringing it up.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Yes, yeah, thanks for bringing it up. I hadn't actually realized that that one building was for sale specifically. I guess I'd want to know maybe from the staff a bit more information that, you know, maybe why is it that Merlot Guyer is looking to sell that one building? Why split that off?
Just for clarification, they're not. It's still part of the whole overall parcel. Okay, so this is more hypothetical in the, in the, in the context of the potential, the whole property has been.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I, I think if we were to buy it, I would want to make sure we give a soft landing in that. I think youth care is really important to stay. We've made a really big deal about the e-bike store. And so not want, because I've seen what happens at Northgate Mall when that's getting redeveloped, and pretty much every mall tenant gets kicked out. So I think we would have the ability to allow for a much softer landing for the current occupants. Or potentially allowing them to stay if they if they, we feel they serve a very important, you know, role for the community.
I completely agree and and certainly youth care provides an important community service that the city supports.
You bet. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, please.
So I, thinking about that acquisition and thinking about our pedestrian connector to the Berkman and what it may, if if it turns out that the landing site is somewhere near where the Bank of America is. And just thinking about how that interplay may be necessary to be dealt with. And then this one as well, it's like, it seems like there's there's multiple opportunities, but obviously limited resources. I think it'd be interesting to understand more about those implications for both those properties.
I thought of the Bank of America property, but I think that the professional building is of greater use to us.
For sure, but if that's the landing site, then we have to deal with that or we don't get our overpass or underpass. So I think that's a that's a, that could be a necessary thing. And then and then where does that put us with our pocketbooks for doing the thing that we would like to do versus things we kind of need to do, so.
Yes, definitely. Good question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riddle. Yeah, just from my perspective, um, you know, it's something that has been tossed around for years. Acquisition of the town center goes back, gosh, 20 plus years back to GE Capital days, I believe. And I'll confess at the time there was, there wasn't a great track record for local cities in terms of their acquisition of properties, but now as the region has grown so rapidly and density has increased so dramatically. And the challenges of and the needs of our community have increased exponentially, really, what they're what they're looking for. I think there's some opportunities there for professional building and potentially community space here in sort of a plaza area for for the this, and we we actually explored that a little bit early on in the town center process of figuring out what it would look like here. In that context, this is a refresher. It was predicated on, we were, we were assuming the parking garage was coming two years from now, and now it's, you know, when I'm 142 or something. And I'm only 29, by the way, so that's a long ways off. But the now with that horizon going way back decades potentially, I think that there may be more opportunity for us to talk about this as a community to as you indicated, that the pedestrian crossing, a community center being masters of our own destiny when it comes to third place commons and not uncertainty, as well as, I think it was your idea many years ago, Vice Chair Casover, about trying to find, provide a space for the library that is commensurate with what the community size and needs are. Our neighbors on both sides of us have have wonderful facilities. It just honestly hasn't been, as I understand, hasn't been enough real estate to be available for that kind of build out and and partnering with local agencies in any kinds of thing like this could be a real, real potential. And I do recognize that Sound Transit did reach out for partnering opportunities and didn't really, for the part relative to the parking garage, didn't receive much of response, if any, if if I recall correctly. So let's bookmark that one. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bodhi. Colleagues, questions about other ideas that Councilmember Bodhi has brought into the mix here? Please, Councilmember Riddle.
More of a general comment. I I think what what's great is how in line I think we are. I think you had some really great ideas, I think you expounded on some of the comments that we had made before, but I think that it comes to the point that we're all really in tune with our community and where it needs to go. And so I think that really sets the tone for where this council's going forward is as a group.
I absolutely agree, and I saw that too. I should have said that. To me, this is more the icing on the cake, and I think we've, we've started to bake the cake and the community, I think, is is uh overall in the same place. So I feel really lucky because you do hear in sound cities about city councils that have a lot more divisions in terms of vision for the future and so forth. I think our our challenge is our vision is bigger than our budget. So we have to come up with creative solutions and and cost effective actions.
Exactly.
Excellent point. I I think too, and I apologize, I think you had a comment to make.
Oh.
I'll step in in a minute.
Yeah, Laurie, I I wonder if we could talk a little bit more about your idea on neighborhood parking zones. Are the areas that you mostly are concerned about, like the park and the transit stop areas? And and you talked about engaging with the with those neighborhoods there? And and what would you want to know from those neighborhoods before we made any policy kind of proposals?
So yes, I am thinking about the locations of the BRT stops close to town center, you know, which is both a of BRT and broader issue. So and the park, I think the park parking is going to be, you know, a significant challenge for us to figure out, but heck, I'm not sure we will. I think in a lot of other jurisdictions, I'm generally aware that neighbors in the geographic area, you need to have more than 50% of the neighbors kind of concurring in it. So I don't see it so much. I I think there should be broad public engagement, but I also think that the actual neighbors in the area that's bounded by the neighborhood parking should have a specific say. And if, say, only, you know, 25 or 30% of the neighbors said yes and 70% said no, I don't think you would want to move ahead with it. So that's the kind of of consideration that that I'm aware of. I'm pretty sure that Seattle has worked that way, that you have to have certain percentage of the neighbors concurring.
And so concurring to restrict parking to to residents only, or what 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 sort of parking zone were you thinking?
Oh, I'm I'm open to what the program would be. You know, obviously, it's primarily, I've primarily thought of it as a peak hours commuter situation, but as we see how things develop, what is, and with our new work patterns, what is that going to look like? So I see it primarily as a weekday thing. It's not, it's not like neighborhood parking in Wallingford where it's about the local businesses and the homeowners together, you know, and trying to make sure people are coming for the businesses, don't crowd out the homeowners. It's not like that. It's more trying to make sure that in those peak time periods that homeowners aren't crowded out from the use of their neighborhood. So I think again, I'd be glad to explore it more. I've I've more again, thought about it at the 20,000 foot level.
Thank you.
Just a quick thought, I had mentioned earlier that and I think in a previous conversation, we actually have in this in our code, a a methodology for creating no parking zones, which I confess, I didn't even realize there's a very specific methodology for that. And there's probably opportunities should the community and and this body consider it to not reinvent the wheel again, but find ways to find things that would work, programs that would work for the community.
Yes, it could be, it could be something like no parking for more than two hours during these time periods. So just to try to keep things from bogging down. And so so I don't see it as an absolute ban on parking or anything like that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it's by petition or something of the neighbors, like you mentioned too. Councilmember Goldman.
Thanks for bringing this up. And actually, Councilmember Riddle and I had a discussion about parking issues as well. I'd like to see more data. That could be more quantitative data from, you know, within specific neighborhoods, what fraction of on-street parking is utilized during the day? Also, just focus group type data from the neighborhoods, how big a concern is it for them? And also, I think this ties into Sound Transit, something we've talked about is the last mile problem. Since I think we're all kind of in agreement, we're not getting the parking garage anytime soon, if at all. So the people who don't, I'm lucky enough to, I can walk to 522. So I'm okay getting to the bus. But for people who live pretty far from 522 and 104, if they're going to ride the bus, they either need parking or they need a way to get to the bus. And so connecting back with Sound Transit, what sort of system might Sound Transit develop? Or possibly coordinating with Metro, what kind of system might they have for getting people to the BRT line?
I completely agree on the data-driven aspect of it, and that's why I didn't think it was anything we would work on immediately and we would deal with it as the information or the data indicated there was a problem. I think you raised a really good point about people who you know, need to park somewhere and maybe the professional building site acquisition could include some park and ride parking at town center for our sit it for someone with a with a LFP sticker.
It seems to me too, just on point, Councilmember Bodhi, that there was actually some park and ride parking spaces that were actually delegated. They were leased by Metro or someone in the upper mall. They just never got used. They were signed for a period of time and then I think there was 20, I I believe there, I'm, maybe I'm conflating this with something else, but I think there actually was at some point, but they were too far away for people to really, you know, then they continued to do the hide and ride here in front of city hall, basically. Councilmember Riddle.
I think another aspect to the parking issue is then enforcement and getting together with the the police chief and really understanding how this would impact his operations, of course. So just another aspect that we want to be cautious of and taking the data and I think Councilmember Goldman talked about, like, who who would do that? Would it be the police officers in their normal patrols? Would we have something specific, a consultant? All that's sort of open, but the data beforehand, but then the enforcement afterwards is always really critical.
I absolutely agree. And after the first round of enforcement, sometimes the word gets around. So, you know, just saying periodic enforcement might work, but I I completely agree. I don't see it as anything that would be that we would work on in the next two years. I see it as something that we would plan for, think about and set the stage for as we started to see problem areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodhi. Mr. Mayor, you had a comment.
Yeah, just real quick, Councilmember, but we have a lot of information because we went, Tom, you should, you probably remember us.
Oh, yeah.
We went two by two different council members out to the neighborhoods during the parking thing. I'm sure the chief has a lot of it and things you didn't mention, but the fire department was against a lot of the parking because it made the roads too narrow. So it was, it was an interesting time, but I think we have a lot of information to put with that. We, we talked about stickers and all that, and so we'll talk to the chief and stuff. I think we can probably give you a lot of upfront information and so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it occurs to me, colleagues, we're going to run short on time here. We have a couple other items here coming up, but and we'll definitely revisit all this, but it it occurred to me that parking is part of, kind of mixes in with community vitality, as you indicated, but it also, it's public safety, it it and it also fits into our broader conversations about traffic calming, speed limits, things like that, as the mayor indicated. There are emergency vehicle questions about parking being blocking. And I think that in the very near future, we need to be and it is my intent to bring this body back together to have a deep as much as we can and amount of time we have together. A a little bit more exploratory conversation about traffic calming, speed limits and things like that, because there's a lot of interesting data, you know, I'm kind of a data geek when it comes to speed limits and traffic calming, and I really find, and Mayor indicated too, that there there is a repository data. I spoke with the chief earlier today and he has lots of ideas about these various things. So I think we should book that, mark that for another conversation. And maybe the parking question is is maybe less immediate, as you indicated, Councilmember Bodhi, and we can find a way to have that at a future meeting, because I can certainly see us having a conversation about that for you know, 20, 30 minutes at least, just to get it, get it rolling and go from there. And and with that, I wanted to say too, I didn't get a chance a moment ago, I do really appreciate the comments that were made about this all tying together. I I really, I really agree with Councilmember Bodhi and Councilmember Riddle. And those of you who have said this in the past, that so much of this and so much of what we've had conversations about and with the community has been a a resonating, resonating themes for a period of time. Of course, some of these things have come to a finer point because of crowding issues. But to Councilmember Bodhi's point, there are, there are councils out there that they have very different ideas and hear very different things from their communities. And and so I think we have it. I wouldn't dare say it easier, but I think it's a little bit more in front of us and visible than it might be in some other communities, and I'm thankful for that. Any other questions for Councilmember Bodhi? We have a couple more minutes on that. And then what I'd like to do with your indulgent indulgence, put some of this all back together. We'll find time for about a half an hour at a subsequent meeting. We'll have to talk about that in a a bit, because we have a holiday that falls on our necks, can be the whole meeting. And then, and then finish up sort of the mid, mid to longer term kinds of goals, just on a very quick exercise to prioritize those. I think we all have some things that are gelling in our minds that that we would prioritize. And I wanted to ask Mr. Lebo if he has any comments. You've been very quiet.
I think this has been a very good discussion, and I think there is a lot of commonality. Like many of the other council members that have talked, I do support the idea of looking at the data. One of the things that we have is our streets, for example, are in some ways an unused infrastructure. Whether you call it parking availability. Parking also has the benefit, as others have suggested, that they are in fact traffic calming measures. That when you have narrow streets, people have to make decisions about how they progress through it. I think, as many of you know, I'm very much interested, as you are, in the financial situations for the the city, and so I'd be very much interested in looking at the data, for example, about purchasing something like the professional building. I would always be a little hesitant, though, to put in a lot of non-revenue generating uses. Because then otherwise it becomes supported by the community, and that's a very big ask for a very small community. We do recognize that it takes a fair amount of investment from our community members to generate any significant amount of money and property that has a very high price to it, but very little generating capability because of other uses would represent a significant decision by the community. So I do think that we should take advantage of the opportunities that we have, whether it's in infrastructure and look at things like the professional building, but be very hard to judge whether or not it's in the best interest of the community. I am curious, and and we've seen this before, is how do we address what the citizens talk to us about our post-plan and the rejection of our taxes to pay for that? And I'm very interested in seeing how we move that forward.
Excellent point. And again, when we talked about trails and sidewalks, we talked about connections, and I know that the Parks Board and 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 other groups are looking, really clamoring for sort of trails and connections and things like that, and we have to figure out a way for us to to fund those types of endeavors going forward. Okay. Last chance of questions for Councilmember Bodia on this. Yes, please.
And in the danger of us starting another half an hour discussion, but love, 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 love your idea about the endowment and land trust, land bank. I think this is a much larger discussion. We we talked about it briefly with the staff and there was some indication that and with Councilmember Casover's help, that setting up a foundation is really a tough thing and there are a lot of regulations around it. So idea of basically partnering with a community group to do something like that, I think is a great idea, and I think we should pursue it because, as you say, this window is pretty short, because there's going to be a lot of this stuff coming up fairly shortly. So thanks.
I would just say there could be two different categories for land acquisition. There could be an endowment with a partnership with the Stewardship Foundation perhaps. But for some other, like improvements at parks and things like that, there are ways the city can take donations of funds, as I understand it, as long as we're careful and have good policies. So there could be two different approaches that are complement. as long as we're careful and have good policies. So there could be two different uh, approaches that are complementary.
I do have a thought, and but I've forgotten the official word for it, but the, the community uh, purchased properties, and I think it's, uh, there's a name for it, and I'm so sorry, it's just sort of out. But there's been conversations about getting the uh, affordable housing here at Town Center through a process like that, where if a developer isn't inten- interested in it, because it doesn't meet their pro forma, but the community is interested in it, can the community create that nonprofit that would then purchase that and or land lease it and do the affordable housing there? So I think there's some other opportunities for the community involvement, community engagement, endowments and and uh, donations that might involve other kinds of organizations other than simply purchasing this property, but maybe even that development that we're talking about wanting at Town Center.
Yeah, thank you for that. And and on point, uh, you may have read that um, Executive Constantine is going to try to ensure that Conservation Futures is uh, the funding is going to be, it's dwindled to about half of what it was supposed to be and try to get it back up to, to where it was originally agreed to be with the communities, and there may be an opportunity there for, for us for acquisitions. And uh, one of the things I really like to see on on point, we have a, we have a list through um, our post-plan of, of community properties that this community owns. But I I think I mentioned this before, I'd love to see some of these wetlands areas and things like that celebrated with some sort of signage or designation, so people recognize that it's not just a vacant lot, that it's actually the community owns it. Um, probably, I think of the parcels that are adjacent to, we as kids on Ballenger Way, there's, I believe, two there, uh, that were purchased in the nineties. There was, there's a whole series of those. I took Councilmember um, Fretani up to a was that a pretty neat property? Yes, I'll tease you with that, a pretty neat property that I didn't even wa- wasn't even aware that the community owned until, up in Horizon View, up until a couple of years ago. And um, and there's these things that, it's sort of celebrating the things that we have um, without and and then thinking about the future as well. So, um, yes, please.
So to Community Land Trust, thank you. Um, but on point was the, the conversation about celebrating the property, the community properties is, um, I mentioned in the uh, in the retreat, doing something along kind of an art program, and part of that could really be about creating a community brand that would allow us then to highlight these, that it would become something recognizable. That would be uh, ideas that would obviously come from the community to build it, but it would be part of wayfinding, signage, and it would help us celebrate these things in a very recognizable way. Um, so I think that could all tie together in a very lovely manner.
Councilmember Bodie.
Uh, I do think that's the kind of thing that both the Parks Board at some point, when they have bandwidth, uh, and um, the website could help in um, in um, highlighting and and profiling. And I I like the idea of, you know, integrating some of these other concepts with it, including arts programs with it as well.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent points, everyone. Um, and I would just, just kind of in, in one last thought and then in closing. That as we think about these, again, these are, this is ideation, this is not getting down into the weeds of trying to figure out how we're going to actually tactically do these things or execute on these things. But it is really important for us to, and I know you all are doing this, but I keep having to keep top of mind, we're also going to have as policymakers a res- a distinct responsibility of figuring out, yeah, this is a great idea, like what I said about celebrating these, the different um, uh, community assets, we have to pay for them, and we have to resource and give, provide the administration the resources to make sure that they um, and, and make sure that we're, we're thinking about that as well. And um, with limited resources is a challenge, but I really like the idea of continuing, thinking about public-private partnerships when it comes to land acquisition and, and celebrating some of these spaces. We do have some um, very uh, considerate, environmentally conscious uh, landowners within the community that have properties that are in conservation. I have significant conservation easements. Um, and uh, those two, those kinds of things too, are things that at least should be recognized and celebrated, because they do a great service to our community for keeping those um, properties from being developed out into McMansions or what have you. With that, we're almost to the top of the hour. I wanted to move on to a couple of items of, of other business. Councilmember Riddle has a proposal that she'd like to share with you all in per our basic procedures about bringing things to the council. This is the place where, again, uh, we don't expect her to bring us, or any one of you, to bring something fully baked or even half-baked. This is, this is the place in a friendly environment to say, hey, are you interested? Uh, somebody willing to help co-sponsor this and a broad generalization of yeah, here's the, the thumbs up to move forward and and get it written up and and put together a proposal. With that, Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so this is, these, this is the ingredients if we opt to make this cake. Um, so I've been uh, thinking about and looking into kind of a locking mailbox program for the State Lake Forest Park. Um, and so why would I even consider this? Obviously, we all know that mail theft is a big issue. Um, it can lead to obviously identity theft, it can lead to stolen checks and cash, especially around Christmas time and those Christmas cards. Um, we don't specifically track um, mail theft here. It's, i- i- it's part of the theft category, as you see the um, police chief provide. So sometimes it's noted in the description, so we can get some numbers out of it, but um, I think it's pretty clear that it's underreported. Um, people simply don't report it to the police, and sometimes if it's not categorized correctly, in the police department, it's hard to pull those numbers. Um, so we also have an HDMI issue, which will be coming right back in just a moment. There we go. Oh, no. So um, of course, the best kind of gold standard for securing your mail is, of course, like a P O box at, at a at at a facility, but we don't have one of those here in Lake Forest Parks. It's not very convenient. And people love the convenience of staying within our community, so the second best way is to have a locking mailbox. But that's not the be-all, end-all. As you can see, this photograph, that is my mailbox. Um, next. That's my mailbox.
Looks kind of like one.
Now, uh, case, I actually, case in point, that's my box, but I did not think about this program. Uh, after that, I did think about it before that happened. It just put the pin in that needing to happen. So like I said, we do have some data available from the police department, so they were able to go through their data, sort of sift and sort. And so that's what they have for fourteen through twenty-one. You can see, we had a lot more reports earlier. Um, as we get into the more recent, the reports fall off, not a lot of understanding as to why that happened. We're less thefts, or just people were too busy to report it. Um, and then I did throw up a next-door poll, so very unscientific. Um, but in January twenty-two, looking at the last three years, so of forty-seven total responses, um, twenty-one said that they'd had theft and four had had an attempt theft, and two had just given up and got a mailbox. Um, but what's interesting is those that were, had stolen mail, they said that they were from locking mailboxes. I know. So why am I here? Okay, let's keep going. I will redeem myself, I swear. Um, so obviously, the Locking Mailbox Program has goals, is to reduce the impact of theft on residents. Um, to reduce the time that the police have to process those. If they don't have to process all of these, then they're freed up to do community policing, active patrols, uh, parking enforcement. But um, and it does improve our perceived and actual safety within our community, so reads to the community vitality as well. Um, but again, the data shows mail is still stolen from mail, locking mailboxes. So the, the problem isn't that it locks, but it's how easy it is to break into. So there are better locking mailboxes. They're not readily available at easy places for our community to purchase them. Um, so here's a success story that got me really interested. The C-TAC Councilmember Peter Kwan started, actually, as a grassroots thing. He just did it for his community. And he was replacing regular mailboxes with locking mailboxes. And then the city thought this was a great idea, and they actually adopted it as an official city program in March of two thousand eighteen. Um, so since then, um, having that conversation with them in twenty-twenty, no locking ma- mailboxes of this program had been broken into. Um, one technically got theft, but they actually cut the post and took the whole thing. Can't really stop that. Um, though the company that does provide their ma- mailboxes stuff does have steel posts. Um, they did invest into this program, so there is a cost to it, and I'll be very uh, open about that. In their case, a larger program, their uh, nineteen thousand dollars a year in the staff time to cover it, and they um, were thinking uh, to cover about the ninety-five mail thefts, hundred fifty fraud thefts. So that's what their staff and police department put into it. Um, and then they spent money on the program, so that's how much they invested before the program. Um, and it's, they have adminis- city administrator or uh, city staff administrate it, and their public works do the installation. So that's their program. Next. Um, so what would that entail, especially here? So obviously, there's sort of three parts. First, we have to manage the requests from the residents, and that takes staff time. So again, we have to understand that implication. Um, part of this is reducing costs to our community, so getting bulk pricing. So there's cost to that and storage. And then there's installation of the mailboxes, which is, again, another times uh, staff effort that has to go into it. Um, so what, we could do something very similar to C-TAC. Again, it's worked for them, uh, Taquilla's, but Bell uh, Furyan has also adopted, I believe, their program. Um, we would purchase the mailboxes at bulk rate, and we just pass that savings on. So we don't make any money, we just pass it on. Um, I would like to say that we would provide subsidized costs for our, our low-income and disability residents. And I think we do that with a lot of our, our services that um, have a high cost. Um, and we aren't in a position right now with our public works to be able to do that installation. It's, it's just something that we feel we're not ready for, but I have contacted the Rotary, like First Park Rotary, and they think this would be an amazing volunteer opportunity for within their organization. And they'd be willing to come out and do those installations um, once a month, you know, as long as the city kind of directs them, here's the boxes, here's the addresses, and and there's the place to go. The picture you see there above was the before. It's kind of hard to see, but that, that was taken when my mailbox was pride open. You can see the other mailbox did get opened as well. And then the after, uh, the two mailboxes on the sides are the uh, same brand that C-TAC uses. Um, and one of the pieces, I didn't get a great shot of it when I got this put together, but you'll see the top one, it's basically a flush front, and it really gives actually a great place for a crowbar. Like, it's, it's designed to have a crowbar stick there. It's really kind of creepy when you think about it. The ones down below, the, the, the entry lid is actually pulled forward, like three quarters of an inch, so you just can't get a crowbar onto the top of the locking bottom part. So just looking at it from a engineering standpoint, it did seem better to me, and the, the, the evidence from C-TAC is, isn't in fact, it is in fact harder to break into. Um, thicker metal, more robust key uh, system. Um, so just generally an upgraded, much more robust product. It's just price point is way above where your standard ones you see at the top there. So a locking mailbox program where we buy in bulk and pass that savings on will mean more people will be able to afford the better mailbox. We would reduce theoretically all that mail theft that we uh, know happens in our city. I think that's the last one. Oh, no. Um, just to give you sense, C-TAC has done the heavy lifting, so they have a draft ordinance. They have an RFP that they've already put out to pick their mailbox. Um, other cities have just basically used their results, because it was a public process to fel- solicit the mailbox. They just but use the same mailbox uh, company. Um, they have an application form, like I said, Taquilla has done it. Um, interest from Kenmore as well. Obviously, they see mail theft there as well. Um, and so this would also be for businesses that own their property, especially our small um, single-property businesses that currently have just a regular mailbox for their mail. So it would, it would secure their uh, mail better as well. The only thing this can't replace is those pre-bulk mailboxes, where you've got the multiple. Those, once those go in, you can't downgrade to a single unit. So um, that's the only thing that we wouldn't be able to address if we were to max C-TAC's program. And that, I think, is the end.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Riddle. Colleagues, questions for Summer?
Truly. Oh, I very much appreciate you doing this uh, homework for it and bringing the idea for, I, I, I'm supportive of it. I would just check to see with, for example, at C-TAC, could we just use their purchasing agreement? Sometimes they're inter-local agreements.
Um, he says that it was just a straight-up RFP, and uh, they got the responses, the, the the results of their RFP was a local company that manufactured it uh, within Washington State, which was a, a bonus.
Yeah, I'm not sure what green is. I think it means you're special. And that's what, that's what mine just did.
If you can hear me, um, up there. Um, I like the idea. Um, my neighborhood has kind of the mailbox station. Now, those of you who have given me rides have seen it. And I wonder if that could be an economy of scale, because we have about a hundred letter-sized mailboxes and about fifteen package-sized mailboxes. Because what's happened is mail, like letter theft, has been replaced with porch piracy. And so maybe there's an economy of scale where you have a cul-de-sac with a dozen houses on it. They get, you know, through the city, some sort of subsidized mailbox station that has twelve mailboxes plus two package slots, and then you're able to address both mail theft and package theft all in one. Um, but I like the idea in general.
I, I've heard some folks, and I don't have data on this, so I'd love to look into it, that um, those bulk stations take, you, you break one lock and you get access to all of it. So some folks say that it's, it can be um, more in, in um, engaging for a, a actual thief, but I don't know, I'd love to see more data on that.
And that's, if you, if you watch the mail carrier deliver the mail, they have a special key that opens up like the entire door, and then they have access to the dozen slots all at once, which is, for them, is more efficient.
Yeah.
Um, I, I mean, I personally quite like the approach. It also helps that I, I'm one of the closest houses to the mailbox station, so it's super convenient for me. Um, but I just wonder if, if cost would be an issue, if this could be a way of lowering cost per unit in a way that doesn't very much compromise the safety of, of it.
And I don't know, those units come direct from uh, the postal service, whereas this would be through um, a private company. So I don't know, we'd have to look into that. I think it's worth looking into.
I'm supportive of the concept. I was wondering if you know how much the cost to the, you know, uh, homeowner, it is, the, the units that C-TAC is providing at cost.
For sure. I believe in two thousand nineteen, it was, I think, one oh eight was the bulk rate, one sixty was the retail rate. But things, of course, could have changed since then, but it was a significant savings.
Um, I did want to say, I also had experience with one of those uh, multi uh, box units while I was working in Portland, and um, yes, they're put in by the post office, and then if they're broken into, it takes the post office about three weeks to get you a new one, I'll just tell you.
Oh, no.
You get no mail unless you go to the post office uh, in the meantime. So uh, anyway, there's pros and cons. Uh, um, I um, I was wondering, though, you know, because I, I have the kind of mailbox that you're, like yours, that got broken into. Um, and I got mine from Bulger, uh, a local business, let's say. Um, and so, yes, and I was wondering if um, if there was a different hybrid, which is to ask them, you know, if they had a contract to install a hundred a year, uh, what would the bulk cost of that be? And then you get the installation covered. So it was just an alternative idea, maybe too complicated, they may not have the bandwidth. Um, but I, it just occurred to me, before you got to, down to the RFP, I was thinking, oh, so is there a uh, lock uh, company like our local one that uh, that did a bulk contract or something like that? So just uh, flag that as a, as a possibility, but conceptually, I like it. Uh, and I, it raises a question for me, because I haven't had any theft issues, like is that something I would take advantage of or not, or would I wait till my mailbox was broken into first, you know? Anyway, thank you for the helpful presentation.
Thank you. Yes, I thought my mailbox had been broken into. It turns out it was the, an overzealous uh, recycling truck that swung the container down on my mailbox and obliterated the post too. Um, but colleagues, uh, all we're looking for here is acquiescence, yes or no, whether we're going to be, whether um, support this in concepts for Councilmember Riddle uh, to look at somebody to co-sponsor it and move forward. Uh, with, I, I fully support this. I think this is a great service to provide, particularly to uh, an aging population as well, because sometimes there's a chunk. Uh, Minister Hill.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Summer. Um, do you understand from C-TAC what the quantity is that they have to order to get the bulk pricing? Because I'm thinking storage.
I know. Oh, sorry. Okay, thanks. Um, oh, now it's on. Um, no, but that's an easy question to ask. Oh, sorry. Okay, thanks. Um, now it's on. Um, no, but that's an easy question to ask. Um, and I can get that number for us.
Councilmember Ferratoni.
And uh, Councilmember Riddle, uh, I appreciate the fact that you addressed the equity question. And uh, um, I guess, you know, as somebody who paid three times as for his mocking mailbox, um, the 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 question that I have is, um, so uh, do you know what C-TAC? You know, you said you mentioned the nineteen thousand figure, something that they invested in. Is it all going towards subsidies or how much of that is going towards subsidies to help folks?
I think that I think I misspoke at the beginning. The nineteen thousand was what they were spending dealing with the theft before they instituted the program. I think I have numbers. Uh, again, I can easily get that from uh C-TAC of what they're spending now. Um, trying to remember, they gave me quantity. They were putting in like eight to ten mailboxes a month or something like that. Um, and their their uh Public Works was the one that did the installation. And and they don't do posts. They're not gonna do the concrete in the post, so they would just replace, you know, oops, sorry, they would replace the the mailbox on top of it. And if you wanted, you could build your own post and they'll come put the mailbox on it. It kind of, that was where they drew the line. And um I think I was thinking ours might be somewhat similar.
No, appreciate your comment because uh um a lot of the costs that I mentioned is actually building the structure around it. So we have it inside of a little, you know, uh, one of our local artisans here actually in city builds these, you know, the ones with the tree cutouts on them. Yeah, yeah. Um, so so that's that's what I was wondering about. So they're just providing the box. Uh, and uh, um, I guess the question then is, uh, C-TAC is a significantly bigger city. So um, ideally, basically, we could, you know, the uh economy of scale would work so that our uh outlay would be less than what C-TAC is doing, which would be good.
And I was thinking if if it's something that the bulk rate was too much for us, again, if we start talking with our neighbors, our partner, you know, partner with like Kenmore, then maybe together we can hit that same bulk rate.
Great, thank you. I I appreciate it very much. We all do. And I know the community well. This is this is a very interesting program, and I think it will be quite quite beneficial going forward. So, thank you.
Customer. Everyone, last quick question. So these locking mailboxes, do they have space for packages?
They have a couple of different sizes. Um, so some are more check-sized uh padded mailer-sized packages. Mine, I get, I can get like two padded mailers in mine.
But like, for instance, could it fit this microphone in?
I think so, but if you're looking at the uh Amazon A1 package, I don't get that much Amazon, as you can tell, um, it wouldn't. It would be too tall to go through the the slot.
Yeah, my mine is just very quick. Um, because we had more discussion tonight about charitable giving to the uh city. I did something I should have done before, which is to do a little quick Google search to discover that actually cities can receive charitable gifts without having a foundation. And that was my, that was something I did not know before. And so I just sent you all an MRSC article that um details that, and it might need a little code change, but or, you know, addition to our municipal code. But I also sent it to our um Director of Finance so that she can understand a little bit more about it. But we don't need to set up anything. We are allowed to to receive uh charitable gifts and um the folks who make the gifts do get tax deduction for it. So all is good.
Excellent information. Thank you. Uh, and with that, we're gonna try to get finished here on time. Um, and Matt, could you bring up the next PowerPoint, please? Thank you. Um, so colleagues, this is a, this actually came out of, uh, I had a conversation with another um council member from another city, and they were talking about um that a variety of cities have created a salary commission that is available under the state statutes as of two thousand one. Our present policy for creating uh for the setting of salaries for elected officials within this community is a little, in my mind, is a little bit um it's awkward, um, because it goes through, it goes through a salary study by the uh Human Resources Department or Designee. And then it comes back with a recommendation after comparable cities have been examined, and it's brought to the policymakers to vote on. And I find it odd, honestly, and a little bit antiquated that um that we would vote on our own future salaries, because under state statute, no changes can be made whether uh within your term. And part of this comes back to, goes back to when I first came on council. Prior to that, there were a couple of salary changes. Uh, one in two thousand eight, and I believe in one in two thousand ten, somewhere thereabouts, to the city council salaries. And um, my conversation came about because with this other council member from another city, because they were going through the the formation of a salary commission. A number of cities have, under the state statute, uh, from two thousand one, uh, actually a huge number of cities, I would say. And I only have a a a small list here because I stopped going through the number of cities that that have actually do this. Allow cities to establish, the RCW allows cities to establish by ordinance, an independent salary commission of citizens with the authority to set the salary of their elected officials in lieu of city council members setting their own salaries. And one of the things, uh, Councilmember Ferratoni and I had talked about this, the question of 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 barriers to entry, so to speak, for people running for office. And making sure there's sort of an equitable level across sort of comparable cities for the salary. My personal belief is that it is important for us to make sure that we are um we're in line with neighboring cities, and that it's not an undue burden for somebody to serve. We recognize that none of us, I would say, are doing this because of the salary. But there are circumstances in which people can't make the commitment because they need a modest stipend to move to to consider running for office. Uh, could you move to the next slide, please, Matt? Um, again, current practice for human resources to conduct a salary survey, MRSC has a survey that's available um uh to to member cities. Uh, I'm sorry, AWC, excuse me, uh, of elected officials in comparable cities and make recommendations to city council to consider and take action. Next slide, please. So this is the challenge that it challenges I've talked about. It gives the impression of conflict for elected officials to set their own salaries. I think it's strange. And we've all talked about trying to look at the horizon well past our terms and trying to, you know, um, bring in some additional folks that um that represent the broader community. And so we want to make it as simple as possible for them to consider running for office in the future. And one of the reasons why I'm bringing this today, Councilmember Ferratoni and I, um, we're bringing it today, is because next year is an election year and things change and in changing something like this during an election year seems also distasteful. Um, and since the salary change cannot take effect during a current policymaker terms, it creates inequities too. That's the other challenge. So if the human resources um uh salary survey of other cities come back with a recommendation to change the salary, the people who are whose terms are um going to, it cannot take effect within your own term. Uh, if you vote for a change of salary, whether it goes down or whether it goes up, regardless of the case, if it goes down, it cannot take effect uh until until after your term times out, whether you run for reelection or not. But in the situation with all the cities where you have a two-year leapfrogging kind of situation, you have a situation potentially when there's a salary change, is in the case that Shoreline, I believe, is going to be changing their salaries here in short order, and they have done over a period of time, that you have some salary, some members of a policymaking body making one amount and one and some making another, that creates another distortion and equity considerations. Moving on here, thank you. Uh, the purpose of the the commission would be allow elective official compensation using local market comparison data to determine what, if any, changes should be made to the salaries of the city, like the cities uh elected officials. And again, this is an independent commission stat structure. Next slide, please, Matt. I'm gonna run out of time. Here are the cities that I found just on a very cursory glance here while when I stop, because there's so many. All of our neighboring cities, with the exception of Woodinville. So we have um Bothell, Kenmore, um Shoreline, Redmond, you know, Kirkland on down the line. All of them have a sit uh uh have a salary commission in various degrees of differences in the structure. Some of them have a larger number of members, some are some a smaller number of members. Um, but all of them convene in a period of time to consider this and then and then disband, and then they reconvene after a period of time, uh, whatever's set by the statute that the um that the the city adopts. Next slide, please. Um, this would serve two purposes. Uh, transparency ensures that elected official salaries are set at arm's length by an independent body of citizens. And secondly, equity, as I mentioned before, it encourages parity with surrounding cities and may help encourage additional candidates to consider serving. Uh, I believe there's one more slide. I forget. Um, and I have, just quickly, I put together a draft ordinance. This is not for discussion this evening, but I just wanted to give you an example of what can be done. Um, and again, there's great models out there, um, because I don't want to um and it has not been legally vetted or anything else, because we don't do that in advance of this kind of conversation amongst ourselves. Um, and and I just wanted to mention that this is the kind of draft ordinance that that could be created. And again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but but there's other opportunities here as well, um, varying in different size from um, of the commission from three to five. I had a conversation with the mayor earlier today. He is in, he has indicated that um that it has been somewhat of a challenge to to continue to recruit for members of various commissions. And I think that that speaks volumes uh to us about we need to really help the administration and mayor. We need to send people their way and and see what they can uh see what we can do in that regard. Mr. Ferratoni, you wanna, would you like to talk about the equity question and some other things as well?
Yeah, and thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Um, so yeah, then I'm speaking in favor of considering these ideas because um, for the reasons that uh the Deputy Mayor already explained, but my uh concern was that um you know, even staffing a commission like this, as the Deputy Mayor alluded, is difficult for the mayor because uh there's just not great candidates coming out of the woodwork. And this is part of my idea of having reviving the Citizens Academy. How do we engage our citizens so that, you know, the our successors who are out there someplace uh know that this is an option? And um, being involved in uh setting um the salaries actually gives uh the people who are on that commission a bird's eye view of what it takes to actually be on city council. And this is a not-so-subtle recruiting tool in the sense that once they see what we actually do, hey, I can do that. That's that's the feeling that I want them to have. And the, you know, the equity piece is literally that, you know, if I have to work at at a second job in the evening to pick up the couple hundred extra bucks so my kid can do something, you know, the fact that what we pay right now won't make up for that, that's that's a barrier to entry. And I think that's a really good point that the Deputy Mayor made, that if we can at least show that we're trying to keep up with our neighboring cities as to the worth of this particular task, I think we have a greater chance of engaging people, not just to, of course, serve on city council, but also to serve on commissions that sets things like these kinds of salaries and really basically train up our next generation. So that's why I'm speaking in favor of this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferratoni. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you uh to both of you for bringing this forward. I've mentioned um wanting to look at the salaries, but it's just so difficult. Um, somebody's always in an election year, it feels like, and it's just a, it's just a hot potato topic. Um, so I didn't realize that the salary commission was an option. So I really appreciate uh the research that you've done and bringing this to us. I did have a couple of quick questions that you may not have an answer to, but just to think about. Um, would this commission consider benefits? Is that something that is part of their purview or is it purely salary?
Uh, and that's a, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Riddle. My cursory look at other communities is that a a very large number of them offer some form of small benefit, a commensurate benefit to the salary, basically. Uh, there's participation uh in certain kinds of, um, you know, small retirement plan, um, minor contribution or something like that. Um, and and so, yes, to answer your question again, and and my draft does not include benefits specifically because we've never had that conversation before. Shoreline does have a benefit, um, small, um, modest benefits that they provide to their elected officials. Uh, Kenmore does as well. Some of the other cities I do uh in addition. And I think that one of the things um that that again is one of the kind of parameters that could be written into uh an ordinance to change the way we we do this kind of procedure.
And then I guess the other question is, would you, um, how do they know what we do? Like, would we prep by logging our hours and, you know, so that they would understand what we're doing? Like, how 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 do they get to know what we're doing?
That's an excellent question for which I don't really have an answer, but I do know that um large part of what I've heard that the other commissions have done in other cities is they're taking comparable cities based upon size and and economic um size as well, so to speak, uh, and demographics and looking at that. We, when we talk about the AWC also has a very good salary comparison tool that is accessible to to um our city as part of our our membership within that group. And I think that also, I think that there's also an opportunity to, for this commission potentially to, I mean, they're going to be fully in, if 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 they were convenient, if if the the policy body decides to move forward with something of this nature, it would be fully independent. And some of those parameters, they might consider uniquely for Lake Forest Park, although I I would have to defer to our our legal staff about what would be allowed in terms of their charter, uh, because there's s- very, very serious considerations under the state statutes in this regard. And keep in mind too, which is something that I didn't mention earlier, is that there's potential, there is the potential, and it has happened with other salary commissions. In other, in other jurisdictions, they can lower the salaries as well and reduce the, based upon uh certain, certain kinds of situations. So I, this is not a, and it and uh in any way, shape or form, kind of an in a a way to increase salaries. It's a way to find a some sort of parity and equilibrium amongst policymakers of the same size of of city as as Lake Forest Park. And 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 moreover, to ensure that that is not a factor, we all know that making a decision to choose to 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 run for uh one of the seats in this community and this po- policymaking body is a daunting decision and making sure that barrier, that is not a barrier as well.
Okay. Thank you, because I I think we're, what we see sometimes is we have certain unique aspects to our community that maybe a community of the same size doesn't have. We've seen this with the police department. We've seen this with our uh municipal court and, you know, you with our council, I think we're somewhat unique in how regional we are, uh, considering the size of our of our city. So just trying to, trying to understand how this commission, if it were to be uh created, would respond to the unique needs of our community as well. And then my last comment, as it looks like our pages might have gotten um cut off, would you be so kind to send this uh digitally after the meeting?
I'd be happy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, did it get cut off? Did everybody skip?
Maybe it's just me?
I, okay. Okay, my apologies. I printed it right before the meeting, so I didn't even look. I was stapling because I couldn't figure out how to do the collating on the on the uh the printer down there. Other other thoughts, uh, we're at the bottom of the hour, so I want to be respectful of staff's time and all and everybody's time. Truly about one?
Tom, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. It is actually something that I researched myself a couple of years back, but then we had this pandemic thing. I'm so never got back to it. So thank you very much for doing that.
My pleasure. So colleagues, is it acceptable for us to uh explore this further and and with Mr. Co-sponsoring Mr. Thank you so much for your consideration. And thank you, Mr. Ferratoni. It it was uh, it was really serendipitous. We came out of the uh the retreat. We're walk, walking out in the rain, and I don't know how the topic came up. And he had mentioned that he was going to, he had, I think he had a conversation with the mayor about uh salaries. And I said, well, you know, it's funny because I actually have a draft and I sent it to you about five minutes later. So i- it's it's coming together nicely, and I and I really appreciate your consideration, everyone. With that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'd like to open up uh citizen comments. And I am have to say, Mike, I'm thrilled that you're here, man. It seems like things are a little bit better in the world. Uh, is there, Matt, do we have anybody out in the ether that wants to make public comments?
Uh, if you want to make, address the council, please use the raise hand function.
Give it a second. Okay, thank you. And Mr. D, would you like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. And Mr. D, would you like to make a comment? Thanks for coming, Mike. And with that, if there's nothing else, we are, oh, yes, please, Mayor.
Actually, I want to point out to everybody, you're using the wireless mics for the first time tonight, which is pretty exciting. And I just want to say something. Thanks to Phil and his vision and Lindsay and all the work she's done to keep track of all this money. And I can guarantee you, a year ago, the city could not have the bandwidth to do what they've accomplished. And that's because of Matt up there, Aaron, our new IT tech guy that you really need to meet, and Jeff, they put it together. I was pretty impressed that it all worked. And you're sitting on the new carpet that Jeff got put in and I was pushing him because I wanted to buy the first meeting. And then we realized the place needed to be painted and he got that done. And you really, when you get to see the staff, this was a monumental task that they took on. And I'm impressed that it all works and I just, thanks to the staff for that.
Yeah. I'm really thrilled that we're going to be able to explore the karaoke function.
We already do that. Mayor karaoke on Thursdays at 10.
I think Administrator Hill had a thought.
Actually, it's just a reminder that we have council pictures from four to six this Thursday evening. And then at six o'clock is the group photo. So you can come anytime between four and six and then run home. The photographer and Larry, you're, you're coming at six for the group photo and then she'll take your individual afterward. So that's, she also have her laptop here. You can pick your favorite picture and then give her instructions on aspects you'd want modified. So in this room, as early as four o'clock, so just a quick reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I appreciate it. And I almost forgot one item. Colleagues, our next committee of the whole meeting is actually on Juneteenth. And I know all of us want to be thoughtful on that holiday. So I and Mr. Furtani is going to be out of town in Denver until returning on the 22nd, I believe. I was checking, wanted to check with you all and see if Wednesday, June 23rd would be acceptable to you. 21st is Juneteenth, right? Did I get that wrong?
Wednesday is June 22nd.
22nd, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you back in town?
Yes.
22nd, that's right.
It's the Park Four.
Okay. Let's.
Be possible to move it either to the Monday before or the Monday after, so either the 13th or the 27th.
Me. Oops.
Oh, I mean, if you're going to be out of town.
You could zoom in, sure, sure. But I thought we're, we're traveling on, it would be the 21st, evening of the 21st, which, right, but we're, we got Juneteenth.
So you're talking about moving it just to the next day, to the, to the Tuesday. Are you traveling that evening? No.
Okay, so if you're not moving, i- is, is that Tuesday or is that planning, the planning commission is earlier in the month? Yeah. Does the 21st work for you folks? I want to keep these discussions moving. We're, we're making some great progress and.
It's midsummer's day.
Fair enough. Okay, so we'll move the, the committee of the whole, that will be noticed as a, because it's a different date. It'll be noticed as a special committee of the whole, not a special agenda, just because of move of the date. And then the other thing is colleagues, as soon as I get a, I mentioned that I was going to try to get us all back together for a council dinner, which we haven't done in a number of years. And our friends at the local 104, their patio is under construction. So I'm waiting to hear back from them about when that will be finished. Because I'd like for us to support a local business for that. And I'll present a couple of dates for you, for your consideration before the summer really kicks in. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and thanks very much to staff.